Good evening, everyone, and welcome. As I call to order the regular school board meeting of independent school district number eight-eight-two. It is Monday, the twenty-fourth, six P. M. Please note, we are missing Casey Root tonight. Please stand and join me as we say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you, and our first order of business will be approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
By Melissa Curtis, second by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Motion passes five-zero. I have no citizen comments tonight, which will move us on to fiscal stability, looking for approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes five-zero. All right, on to collaborative collections. Superintendent Eric Olson will be going over the gifts.
All right, good evening, Board and audience members. Today, we have three donations coming forward to you. First off, Minnesota State High School League Grant Form A, an amount of two thousand five hundred five dollars to assist with the free and reduced participation fees, and then also from Minnesota State High School League Grant Form B, two thousand eight hundred, to purchase AED machine for the middle school tennis courts and CPR training. So those are just two grants that Mr. Ebenech tries to bring forward every year and try maximize the money that we can use to help program and students. And then the third one is from the Minnesota Dark House Anglers Association, one thousand dollars, and that's one of the donations to the ever-popular fishing team sponsorship. So bring those three forward to you tonight. Thank you to those and those three community members who continue to support the great things that we're doing for kids.
Be resolved by the Minnesota School Board number eighty-two to gratefully accept the following donations. MSHSL grant, two thousand five hundred five dollars to help reduce participation fees. MSHSL grant, two thousand eight hundred dollars for CPR training, AED machine at the middle school tennis courts, and the Minnesota Dark or Dark House Anglers Association, a thousand, for our fishing team sponsorship.
Second. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes five-zero. I know Gary's done such a great job with the AEDs and getting them all around our district, so kudos to Gary for doing that and continuing to be on it. All right, this is another exciting part of our agenda. We get to welcome up to the podium the Monticello Royal Ambassador Program, so help me welcome up Cole Hills, Aurora Kimball, Lilly Teeman, and Claudia Martin.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nicole Hills, and I am currently a special education teacher over at Little Mountain, but tonight I have the privilege of introducing you to the Monticello Royal Ambassadors. They started their reign last July during Riverfest, and they will go through this July. And it is so fantastic to see these girls grow throughout the program. So we're just starting our candidacy program right now. We invite all high school students from age sixteen to twenty to apply for the program and become a candidate, and then at the end of July or middle of July, we will crown three new ambassadors. Just the growth that we see from March through a year and a half is fantastic. They learn leadership skills, public speaking skills, they get to socialize with people out in Monticello and beyond, and I have to say that our judges, every single year, tell us how hard of a job it is to pick only three. Last year, we had ten candidates, and any one of them would have been fantastic, but these lucky ladies got chosen. So with no further ado, Lilly Teeman, Aurora Kimball, and Claudia Martin.
Yes, thank you so much for having us here. Okay, all right, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the program. So the Monticello Royal Ambassador Program seeks to promote community spirit, involvement, and pride into the young ladies who wear the crowns and serve our wonderful town of Monticello. So that's kind of the whole reason why we have this program. Wanted to introduce each of us a little bit. So my name is Lilly Teeman, and we had a couple questions we wanted to answer for you guys. So the three questions we have are, why did I become a candidate? How has this program helped me grow? And what has been our favorite event and local event? So I'll start. Why I chose to become a candidate is because I really wanted to grow myself. I saw this as an amazing opportunity to step outside of my comfort zone and try something that I never have done before. Throughout the whole year last year, I'd kind of been like stepping into small things that were challenging myself, and when this came across my path, I was like, you know, this makes me nervous, like, this seems like a really girly thing, I'm not really into girly stuff. But honestly, what drew my attention to it was just all the experiences that you got to have and like how much it stepped you outside of your comfort zone, like being involved in the community and like talking to people and just all the things that it brought to me. So I really appreciate being able to be a part of a candidate and then now an ambassador. So the main reason I wanted to be a candidate is just to experience that growth and just challenge myself. And then, how has this program helped me grow so far? I would definitely say just like making friendships. I've talked to so many people, and even just these two lovely ladies that I get to be crowned with, like getting to know them better, and then also the other girls that represent their towns and other communities. I would also say just like having the courage to like talk to people, like when we're at an event, just being like, hi, I'm Lilly, or like, especially if we're at a community event, like involving kids and just like saying hi to them. And yeah, I really appreciate this program, and it's truly something special that you don't really get to see anywhere else. And then my favorite local event so far has been the Toys for Tots. We did that back in December, and that was really cool because we got to just help out people in such a special time around Christmas, and being able to help them, like being the person that helped them pick out toys for their kids or whoever they were giving the toys to was really special. And then an overall event highlight for me has been, actually, our first parade that we ever went to was actually in Hanover, and I was born in Hanover, and I grew up there and so did my dad, and so it was really special to be back in that town and like get to see it through like a different light, like in a parade, like never done that before. So that was really special, so yeah, I'm really thankful to be a part of this program.
Good evening, everyone. I am Aurora Kimball. I'll be answering these three questions as well. Why did I become a candidate? The main reason was is because Lori Coaten-Beetle came up to me during the lunch line, and she was like, you have to do this, you have to do this. But she is just such a light in the community, and so I was like, yes, I really do have to do this. And I was on the Monticello Girls Track and Field Team with Lexi Coaten-Beetle, and she's shined so brightly through this program, and I could see how much she grew through it. So I was like, why not? I'll try this out. And also, I really, I really just wanted new experiences, and the candidacy, candidacy did give me new experiences, just hanging out with all of my friends and getting to meet new girls, and also girls that aren't in the same grade as I. That was really great. The next question is, how has this program helped me grow? It's helped me grow through, oh my gosh, sorry, excuse me, so much through my communication skills. Before this program, I would say I was a pretty shy person. I, I was easy to talk to, but it's hard to, it's hard for me to have small talk, so this has helped me grow through that so much, and just, it's helped me, sorry, excuse me, yeah, it's helped me grow through my communication skills. My favorite local event was Chalk Fest during the summer. It was such a great time. The three of us, we did face painting, and we also helped with temporary tattoos, and seeing the kids' faces when you show them your final product, they just light up, and it's such a great feeling. And, and just seeing them interact with each other as well and with their parents and see how they're growing up in the community is such a great feeling, and so great to see. My favorite overall event was Winter Carnival. We went there about a month ago, and getting to see all the towns come together and seeing all of these girls create such a strong knit, strongly knit community, it was amazing. Yeah, so I'm Aurora Kimball, thank you.
I'm Claudia Martin. I became a candidate for this program because my friend Ally encouraged me to, and one of the previous ambassadors told me I would be a good candidate. And I was like, oh, I don't know what this is, but when I went into it, the volunteerism aspect really drew me in, and I really loved helping out our community and being a whole, like, part of it, so, because I'm not really from here, so it was so much nicer to see everything here and truly be in Monticello. This program has helped me with my public speaking a lot through multiple speeches, and it's helped me grow with communication, greeting people, just being in the community again and helping out. It's also helped me like be more timely with myself, just for time's sake, I guess. My favorite local event was helping out at the food shelf, just like putting together food boxes for everybody and helping load it into cars. It felt, it was so much fun to do with everybody and my fellow ambassadors, and it was so much fun, and we got to help serve our community while doing it, and it just felt great overall. And my favorite overall event was definitely Anoka. Their Halloween event is always great, and we got to participate in the parade and design a float for that, which was awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're gonna talk a little bit about us each as candidates.
I just want to go through photos.
Yeah, so I'll start with the top right. So the top right is actually a picture of all of us. We were at, oh gosh, what was it? It was a.
Elk River Gunmen's.
Yeah, so that was actually one of the events that they got us girls to do, was we actually got to go and like actually shoot guns, which was actually like so much fun. We did more than that, we also like got to do archery, and it was really cool to be able to do something like that, because I feel like, you know, sometimes that can be intimidating for girls, but at least to like have that door open, like if we wanted to try that, I thought that was really special. And then the picture right below that one, so the bottom right corner, is actually a picture of me and my parents, and that was the night that we had our gala, and so as candidates, we also get to participate in fun local events and like also go to other communities, but another thing we have to do is like a public speaking, and so we are sponsored by a sponsor from Monticello, and we had to give a speech about them. So that was like our big, big night, and we also had, that was our judging day, so that was kind of a big, big day for us, and it was really special to have my parents come and be a part of that. And then moving towards the left, so then the, like, middle, middle, right ones, is actually a picture of me doing face painting on a girl, and so, again, I think that for us is like doing that with kids has been really special, like getting to be involved with them and doing something that brightens their day. And then the bottom picture is actually us selling ducks for Riverfest. That was really fun. Fun fact, I actually had no idea what Riverfest was until I became a candidate, even though I've lived in Monticello for a handful of years now. But it was really cool to learn more about Riverfest and like how special it is to like Monticello. So I'll let Aurora talk about her pictures now. So the center top picture is me. We were doing hair dyeing one day during Riverfest week, and it was such a mess, but it was so fun to get, to see those kids and see how their hair came out afterwards. And then the one to the left of that on top is me and a fellow candidate, Izzy. We were selling ducks that day, and I think that was actually at the same event. And then the bottom center one is me and a couple other candidates, and I think that was the day before coronation, and we were in Caribou just before going to the street dance, and we were just getting to know each other and just talking about our week of Riverfest, and it was a really great experience.
The top-left photo is us as candidates, I think Lilly's also in this photo, planting flowers outside the Monticello Community Center. So in all the empty flower beds, we filled them with new soil and put in flowers so that, for the summer, to create like joy life, I don't know. And then the bottom one is, again, selling ducks with our previous ambassador, Ellie Lagasson, outside of Cub, which we also did a bagging fundraiser at, which was fun.
Then we went from candidates to being crowned, and this was honestly such like an emotional day, I feel like. It was, it was a really cool day because we got to be in the Riverfest parade, and then they, so we all got to be in convertibles, and we were ridden by, or driven, excuse me, by our sponsor, and then we walked up onto stage and we waited, and then the three of us were crowned. And, yeah.
I would like to emphasize the fact that even though we were the ones crowned, the other candidates are as special and have grown as much as we have throughout that experience of candidacy, and even if they didn't end up with a crown on their head, the crown is not everything. They had this experience, they volunteered, they did the hours, they did the work, and they are just as important as we are in the end.
Honestly, every girl that tries to do this really has, I feel like, courage and bravery, and so I think even though we were chosen, I think all of us shined in our own way and grew in our own special ways from that, so, yeah. And then a little bit more about what we've done. So we've made friends, we've been to multiple communities now, these are just a handful of communities we've been to. We've made friends with Big Lake and some girls in Anoka. We made friends at Winter Carnival, which there were people from all over the state there, so, yeah, and Wisconsin, so we made friends with all of those people. Hanover, that's where all the balloon arch is, and that was their Valentine's Day party, so much fun. Buffalo and Ann and Dale, I wasn't at the Ann and Dale event, but I heard it was really great. Yeah, it's just cool, all the connections that you can make through this program, like you get to meet people from places that you probably have never even like been to, or, and you didn't even know you could make connections, and so it's really cool that this program helps you connect with girls like your age that are doing something similar, and that are also getting to like represent their community as well. And then we've also gotten to represent Monticello and other communities, so we've been to Anoka, we did their Halloween parade where we got to dress up as, in like whatever we wanted to, so we chose Alice in Wonderland, so that was really fun. I was Alice, Claudia was the Mad Hatter, Aurora was the Queen of Hearts, so that was a really fun event to get to do that. Then we also got to do Cambridge, which was really special. They have a parade that's actually all at night, so we got to lit up our float, which was actually really cool and super fun to do, and we, we decided to be reindeer, like Santa's reindeer, so that was really fun. And then we also got to go to Saint Michael, and they had like a pajama party, also got to make cards for people in the nursing home, which that was really special, and it was, it was more of like a bonding time just to get to hang out with other royalty. And then, again, Winter Carnival at the bottom, Saint Paul, that is the Winter Carnival Queen and King, and they were such great people to get to know, and it was really cool seeing adults being in this program as well, or just the whole aspect of royalty, because they just show community service, and like, we don't have to stop here, we don't have to stop after high school, we can keep doing this after even college and throughout our lives. And then the top one above Saint Paul is Kokado. Me and Claudia went there to their corn festival. That was during the beginning of our ambassadorship, and that was so much fun as well. And then also we have Hanover, which was our first event that Lilly talked about, and Winstead, oh, I don't remember, I was not at Winstead, but I'm sure it was a wonderful day, and just getting to represent Monticello and other communities is such a great experience. And we've also got to represent Monticello here in Monticello, so a couple of the events we've got to show up and be a part of was, again, Chalk Fest, which that was a really cool event, getting to see everybody's art, and like people that like come in from even outside the state, so like, I don't know, there were people from like North Dakota and a bunch of different places, which was like really cool to see how our community is drawing in other people from other places. And then during December, we also got to help with the Lions Pancake Breakfast, and then we also did an event at UMC.
We, what are we doing? That was, we did tattoos and face painting again, I think? And we did that at the Lions Pancake Breakfast, we handed out, we helped Santa hand out toys to the kids and like little coloring books at the free breakfast, so that was really fun. ECFE was also tattoos, as you can see on the table, and then we did the Back to School Bash, where we handed out filled backpacks with school supplies in them, which the parents were happy to receive, very, very happy, so that was fun. And then I talked about the Lions food baskets, but those were the boxes where you got to fill and put them in and like help out our community with food, so, yeah.
So we just wanted to say thank you so much for letting us get up here and talk to you guys. Thank you for supporting the program. Thank you for supporting the program and we are very honored to be your 2024, 2025 Monticello Royal Ambassador. So thank you. Thank you so much.
I mean, I must say, how many events do you suppose you do within a calendar year? I was gonna say, these were quite a few pictures and they're probably only a snapshot, so.
Like we've done multiple events in almost every nearby community. And they have more events with them, like intertwined with them, so there's always more.
Well, thank you for coming and representing our community. We appreciate you and the work you're doing. All right, next order of agenda is we would like to bring up Dr. Jim Johnson, who's gonna speak on behalf of the Monticello Educational and Scholarship Foundation, his annual update.
Thank you, thanks for inviting me back, I appreciate it. If you remember about a year ago, we came to you and asked for a change in how the foundation functioned. Foundation was founded in 1984 by one of my predecessors, Shelley Johnson. And it had grown over time, but always under the umbrella of the district. The fund stayed under the umbrella of the district. And that was always a little bit of an iffy thing in terms of keeping the money in that account. And so the auditors had kind of told Tina it was time, we needed to move those out. And so we had to change how we function. We came to you, you guys were gracious enough to work along with, side with us. And so now those dollars are no longer under the district's purview, but they are now managed by Central Minnesota Community Foundation. Here's where those are. Again, since 1984, we have been there. It is still a partnership, very, very much still a partnership. We do have a board. Our board members are Cindy Ochoa, Wilson Bergeroff, Greg Lavalley, Amy Lavalley, Jim Dickrell, Mike Benedetto, Kim Tapper, Kyle Knießli, and myself. We are the nine people who are on the board. But we have district people who work with us as ex officio members. Olson is on that committee. Evony works with us as well. And Tony Chido from the high school is also instrumental in, in our work. And so we continue to work hard. Last year, fiscal year 24, so last May, we gave out $162,150 in scholarships. There were 78 total scholarships that we gave out. That was actually down about $2,500 from the previous year. So the committee is working on trying to identify, why did we see that decrease? Why did some people step away? And there's multiple reasons why people step away. In one case, you have, you know, someone who passed away. In another case, you have somebody who was giving for a certain amount of time. They had X number of dollars that they were going to give, those dollars are done. We do have $2.6 million that the foundation, the Central Minnesota Foundation manages for us. And so you look at that and say, well, if you have $2.6 million, why aren't you giving more scholarships out? Many of those are endowed scholarships. So those dollars have to stay there in order to generate enough interest every year to pay for the scholarship itself. And those will go on for as long as, as we possibly can. One of the big benefits of going to Central Minnesota is Tina was very limited in how she could invest the funds as a public entity. The school district was very limited in, in what we could get for return. And that was an issue. I remember my time as superintendent where we would have people who would come in and were very upset because of the lack of return that they had on the dollars that they'd given to us, but we were really limited. I don't have exact numbers here with me tonight because I only have, we, we haven't gotten our second quarter numbers yet, but our first quarter numbers blew us out of the water because of how those, how that organization can invest our money. So the people who are investing with us are gonna see a much greater return on their dollars. We're hoping then that we can increase the size of the donate, of the scholarships that we're giving out as there's more money in that endowment or that endowment generates more funds, or they'll choose to offer more scholarships. So all in all, we see this as a very, very positive thing as we move forward. So I think it's, it's excellent. Again, it is a partnership and we have a great relationship with the district. Tony Chido just does an outstanding job. Toni coordinates everything at the high school. And she would be very upset with me if I didn't talk about two things tonight, okay? Thing number one is if you want to donate, there are donation opportunities. And you could out to Mr. Olson and, and he can help put you in that direction about how you become a donor. We really look at a thousand dollars as kind of our minimum amount that you could do. You could do that individually, you could do it as a family, you could choose to do it as a board and say, we're each gonna chip in X amount of dollars that, you know, there's different ways that we can do this. An example of that would be current and former administrators in the district give what's called the True North Scholarship. And so retired and current administrators chip in every year and there's a scholarship that goes out. My wife and I give a scholarship. So that's another way of doing it. But probably the biggest thing that we need and where you could really step in is from April 7th to the 14th, we need readers. Because very shortly here, probably within the next two weeks, high school students are gonna be given information about scholarships for this, that will be given out in, in May. They'll fill out their applications. And last year, we had 120 applicants, applicants last year, which actually was, was it down a little bit in terms of the number of applicants? But that's a lot of applications to go through. It is a blind process. You don't know the student's name, the students don't know who's evaluating them. You would be given about 10 applications that we would ask you to evaluate. And you would be given criteria to do that. How many people have done that in the past? Couple of you have. It's, it's, it's pretty painless, I think. I think it's, it's a good, a very, very good process. But we do need people to score because the more people that we have to score, the fewer you have to score. I've been around at times where I've had to score 20 to 25 applications. And I'll tell you right now that that's really not fair to the students. Because by the time you get past number 15, it's really kind of hard to stick with it and concentrate and really give it the attention that it needs to have. Since we've gone to this new process that we have now where you're doing it on your own instead of all of us coming together, I think probably the most I've ever had is 10. I can do 10 and go in depth and, and do it all the right way. So I just want you to know, the Scholarship Foundation is functioning, it's functioning well. We're looking forward to this season of scholarships and this May and celebrating with Class of 2025 as they get ready to walk across the stage into the next stage of life. And if as a community, the work that we do, we can give them a little bit of a bump along the way to help them out, even if it's as simple as buying books or something along that line, anything that we can do to go forward. Our scholarships cover everything, everything under the sun, from students who want to go to a nine-month program to a two-year program, students who want to go into, into a vocational field. Those numbers of scholarships are increasing because that need is out there. Of course, we have traditional four-year scholarships. There are also scholarships that are managed that go into students who are going into the medical field. The Ellison Foundation or Ellison Family promotes one that goes to students who are going to medical school. So we have them across the board. And I've, I've, I've been here in this community for 25 years. Worked in other communities, I'm familiar with other districts. I don't know another community that does it like this one does. I think it's one of the shining stars of what this community does for our kids. So I want to thank you for your, your support in all of this. And then just ask if you have any questions for me.
Got one, just to clarify, is this scholarship, it's, may, a bunch of different scholarships?
Yes, so we are a client of the Central Minnesota Foundation that does many, not just, they do many school districts, they do many cities. And look at Tina, it's mostly cities, school districts, municipalities and things like that that there, if I, if I remember right. Yep. We did, we did a lot of homework as we decided it was about a two-year process that we went through to settle on Central Minnesota. We, we really did our homework to make sure that we had somebody who was reputable, viable. And again, they've got the 501(c)(3) status, so when people make the donations, it's tax deductible for them.
Thanks Jim for the report. Good to hear that things are going well a year later. You said the first quarter return on investment was very good.
Yes.
When does second quarter end?
We should have those, I'm guessing we'll have those by the end of March.
Did it end in December?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and it just, yeah, it takes a while and I don't quite understand why, but it takes a while.
Right, well, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think so, I'm excited to hear how wallet's doing and that it was such a positive change. And just another thing, that's a big shout out to our, our district and what makes us unique and why more, more students should choose to come here.
You know what, I have to, I have to clarify. No, it's not, it was not the end of December, their fiscal year is different. End of fiscal year for them was the end of January. So where, that, that's the end of, of Central Minnesota's fiscal year is the end of January. Yep, mm-hmm, yep. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to innovation and leadership. And we'll start off with School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. We have a letter here that I'll just read that's going out to Hoagland Transportation on behalf of our bus drivers. "Like to take a moment to celebrate school bus driver appreciation. I want to express my deepest gratitude for each of you. This school year has been filled with changes, new start times, updated routes, countless adjustments along the way. Through it all, you have remained dedicated to ensuring our students arrive safely, on time and ready to learn, going as far as providing snacks the first week of school. Change is never easy, but you have met each challenge with patience, professionalism, and a true commitment to our families. Whether it was handwriting, students' names for attendance tracking, adapting to unexpected tweaks, or simply offering a reassuring smile to a nervous student or family, your impact has been felt in every corner of our district. You are the first and the last school connection for so many students each day. And your kindness, reliability, and hard work do not go unnoticed. On behalf of the Monticello School Board and our entire community, thank you for everything you do." So just a shout out, I mean, our bus drivers are incredible and they have such a lasting impact on our students each and every day. And this year with all of the changes was a very different year than we've ever had before, which really put them to the test and they did nothing but make us smiles as a district. And we're there for the families, which was awesome, even through, through some challenging times the first couple of months of the school year. So we just really want them to know how appreciated they are and how much, how much we recognize, how much they do for our district. And on top of that, you know, I was just talking to Melissa here before the meeting got started. And she had mentioned that Hoagland is part of the Rally to Read initiative that's happening. And them and the bus drivers are gonna be doing some work as well this summer to make sure that the students continue to read. So just another thing that they do for our community and our students here in our district. And we're fortunate to have them, so.
Just a shout out to, I like that our school board gives this formal pause and celebration for Hoagland's, just a little unsung hero. But I like to just give a shout out to Tina Burkholler and her family. Every year they go and make, I don't know, 100 cupcakes and deliver them. And, and they don't, you know, nobody knows that or sees that. But I know the bus drivers and staff do and they sure are proud and happy every year to get that, those delicious cupcakes, so thanks for doing that.
That's awesome, thanks Tina. All right, we're gonna go to item number B. And I'm gonna welcome to the podium our Human Resource Director, Mr. Rob Danicar, to introduce our new Director of Teaching and Learning.
All right, Chair Seaborn, members of the board. So I have the honor tonight of introducing a new phase to the district, a new phase pending board approval with a start date of July 1st. But just to, just quickly review before I introduce our new Director of Teaching and Learning, just talk a little bit about our process. So we posted quite early for this position. And we really tried to get out early to get the finest candidates that we, we could into our pool. We had 33 people start an application, we had 23 people complete an application. And from that point, we, we, through screening committees, we took that 23 down to 10. 10 individuals were invited forward for a phone screener. And after the phone screeners, that 10 was condensed down to six. And the six candidates were invited to what was scheduled to be a semifinal round of interviews on Friday, February 14th, Valentine's Day. And we had six candidates come in that day. We had three committees meet with each candidates. One candidate referred to it as the Olympics of, of interviews. And so we took that as a compliment, I think it was, not sure, but we're gonna take it that way. And we had three committees, as I said, two committees had seven members each and one committee had two members each. And each committee took 55, 0 minutes with each candidate. And so we felt like we had a really good experience with each of the six candidates. The plan was to move forward from that day with two or three finalists. And the finalists would have had a two-pronged experience and I won't go into the details of what that is, we'll save that for another interview experience. But on the day of our semifinalist candidates, we had kind of a unique conundrum at the end of the day. As each committee discussed the candidates that had gone before them, it was very clear that one candidate was very well received across all three committees. And so every single member of each of the three committees had one name in common and that was the name that I'm going to introduce to you now. And that's our next Director of Teaching and Learning, Laura Stebner. And Laura, if you could jump up, just a little background, Laura will tell you a little bit about her background. Very excited, she's currently working for the St. Cloud School District. And I'm gonna hand it over to her.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me hearing all that. I know that's what happened and I lived it and I was part of it, but it, it really just speaks to the process that you took for this really important job. And I'm honored and grateful and thrilled and all the adjectives to join the team. I have lived in Monticello for about eight years. And like Rob said, I work for the St. Cloud School District and I've been a member of that school district for 11 years. And I've had the beautiful privilege of serving on the teaching and learning team the whole time, which I think is pretty rare. I think often people come to roles like this, they've been a building principal or, or something like that. But for me, I was able to move into the St. Cloud District back in 2014. And I started as a new position, a Coordinator of Gifted and Talented Services. So St. Cloud was looking to build a program. And my previous teaching experience in Buffalo had me in a gifted schools in a school in your neighboring school district. And I also taught in the classroom there for about seven years. And so I had the great opportunity of coming to St. Cloud to build a really unique program. Right from the get-go, I got to get really creative and make really strong connections throughout the district. And as I worked, I, I got the, the privilege of getting on, to take on more things, which is always exciting for me. I'm always looking for what's next, what's the newest challenge? And through that position, I was able to expand to instructional coaches and the new teacher mentoring program. And then about six years ago, I was offered the position of the Director of Elementary Education. And this last year added the early childhood piece to that. So I've been serving as a Director of Curriculum and Instruction in St. Cloud for about six years, on the teaching and learning team for 11, have really seen the gamut, 11 years. You get to see a lot of standards implementation, curriculum implementation, programs, initiatives. And I really cannot speak highly, more highly of my experience in St. Cloud. I will say it has made me the educator that I am. I'm very proud of the work that I've done there and it will be, it will be hard to leave. But I shared with the interview team that I wasn't, I wasn't gonna leave something I loved and was near and dear to my heart unless it was really special. And that's how I feel about Monticello. So here, I'm living in the community, I get to see firsthand the work that this district does. My children attend, I have an eighth grader and a junior. And they've benefited tremendously from the educational programs and activities and connections here in Monticello. And then I also have the unique experience of being able to be a little bit connected to your work. And so a couple of years ago, I received an email as a parent saying, hey, we're looking for members of, for our district teaching and learning advisory. And I said, that's me, I can't get enough, I love instruction. And so like I might as well go at night to my home district and hang out and learn more. And really, truthfully, it was, is a joyful thing and I was very excited to, to get to do that. And there I got to see firsthand the work that Cindy did and led. And I got to be able to see just the caliber of the work and how committed you are to excellence and really just centering what kids need in all that you do. And so I got to experience that firsthand. And then when Superintendent Olson said, hey, we're doing this Rally to Read, I said, I'm in. So I've also been able to experience that. And so, you know, just by happenstance, I think my, my passion for education and my passion for being a part of my own kid's education as a, as a parent led me here. And then when the, when I. And then when the, when I found out that this position would be opening, I just knew that in my heart, this was something that I really wanted to go for because of what I've seen firsthand of your district. And so I'm thrilled to be here. Um, I can't wait to get started. It's going to be an amazing journey and I'm thrilled that you selected me and I won't let you down. Any questions for me?
Welcome.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, um, everything that she said here today was like, like the summarized version of what we got to experience firsthand and it was so exciting through that interview process. Um, and then, uh, second, just, uh, thank you Cindy for introducing ourselves to Laura. Um, and, um, then Cindy, all the work that you've continued to do. I'd be remiss to not, uh, you know, just mention you as, as, as Laura did. And thanks for that service. We'll get more time to celebrate you, but today it's about Laura and just thank you so much for being here and appreciate the energy and positivity that we can already feel.
Thank you so much.
Got you a little.
Oh, my goodness, you guys. That's amazing. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to Safe and Healthy Culture. First item is approval of our 2025-26 school calendar. But before, um, we move on that action item, um, Superintendent Olson's got a presentation.
All right, um, go ahead, Gavin. You can switch forward. Um, so just looking at our, um, I might stand up for this one, just so I can see a little better. Yeah, I'll stand up. School calendaring is, uh, a very fun, uh, event because you're thinking about kids, kids first, and how do we best serve them through, uh, the use of our days of instruction with them. Um, so looking forward here, uh, you can see, uh, this is the family version. And so, um, this version, um, hasn't been seen out there in the public yet because the people who have been working on the school calendar have all been, um, in district people. So every leadership team touched this, um, calendar. Um, the building administration has all touched this calendar. Um, our, uh, teacher union has touched this calendar. Uh, we really put a lot of eyes on it, um, throughout the whole district in order for, uh, this to, uh, come to you tonight. Um, but this is the calendar itself and I got some highlights that I'll, I'll, um, uh, focus on here, uh, in a second here. But just looking at this, uh, so we can make sure we're clear, the red, uh, calendar key, uh, key is, uh, no school. The green is elementary only no school and the blue is, uh, no school teacher workshop. Um, so when we look at that, um, moving forward, go ahead Gavin, um, I want to highlight a few things. Um, so overall student days, um, kindergarten, 167 days. Um, grades one through five, 168 days. Uh, grades six through 11, 170, and grades 12, 166. And that's because of those different blue nuances of the calendar. Uh, trying to give every, uh, level what they need to be able to effectively work with families during conference time, um, or, um, because of, uh, like, a slower roll that we've, uh, done with kindergarten for many years since the opening of Eastview. Um, in 2017, we've really enjoyed a slower roller for kindergarten to get everybody else situated and start kindergarten, um, a day or two later. This year it's only one day later. Um, but that's why there is a little bit of, of differences, um, in each of the days. Um, 165 is the minimum, so we have to meet, uh, that minimum. Um, and then you also look at the, um, amount of instructional minutes that we have to meet. So with this calendar, um, it is tight because of where our school day is. Um, so I know that we have, uh, in some grade levels, only one day for me to play around with as far as, um, a snow day and some grade levels have two. Um, but we always make sure that we communicate at the beginning of any school year, um, the five, uh, e-learning days, they are called in statute. We call them di- digital at-home learning days. But I still feel comfortable and confident that, that this is a calendar that represents, um, our district well. We've been increasing the number of days. We were at 165 a couple of years ago. We've, we've started to bump those up and we're at a good level, um, right now. Um, a few additional highlights, um, something that we haven't tried before is, um, uh, August 20th. So I'm going to, uh, describe what we feel will be a really award-winning, uh, format this year. Um, we've always had new teacher workshop, um, in August on some dates and those have been two days traditionally. And on the second day, mentors come in and they work with their mentees. And on that day, our school, um, oftentimes, um, feels a little sad, lonely because it's just one person working with, with, um, another person. Um, sometimes we've done it early in August and the, uh, the rooms in the school aren't ready and it's kind of a, I'll just say, it can be, um, a little bit more of a, not an uplifting experience that I think we would want as our first impression for our, our, uh, new teachers that may be starting. So this year, on the second day of, of teacher workshop, which is a week before our normal teacher workshop, we are bringing everybody back. And this is a workshop day as part of the calendar. This is one I wasn't sure how, um, you know, teacher unions and things like that would, 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 uh, would like. Um, but instead, EMM absolutely, they, they see it. I mean, can you imagine? Now they're going to be having grade level meetings and, um, all members are there. And so it's just got a really cool team atmosphere to it and I'm really excited for this day. And honestly, it also saves a little bit of money because you, uh, usually, we're paying all new teachers for two days and now it's a requi- one of those days is going to be a required calendar day for all employees to come and work together. I think it sets the tone for who we are as a district. Um, every kid, every day, that's who we serve. And one of our strategic priorities is collaborative connections and you don't get more collaborative than all working together. Um, calendar highlights, um, elementary conferences. Um, just as a, a reminder, for elementary conferences, um, what we strive to do is, um, to have evening times for, um, our families. Um, and really, the elementary conferences, uh, they strive for 100% at, uh, um, each of sessions. And we, um, usually get that number, if not really, really close to that. And so, um, elec- elementary conferences are the amount of hours that drive, uh, one day that we call comp day in the district. And so the comp day in the district is, um, time on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, a traditional day that gives, um, um, a calendared pause, um, for, uh, to be together or travel. And so elementary conferences, uh, just as a reminder, that's kind of what drives our, um, we want to, we, we strive for, um, nighttime conferences and, and that equals, uh, that comp day. So between fall and spring, um, we, um, have, um, eight hours of, um, time conferences on top of a pretty lo- long school day, uh, or a, uh, conference day. Then the secondary, they also, uh, then use that, those hours to make sure that they also have the amount of, um, time built into their day. So, um, element, our secondary conferences aren't attended as, as high and so they do other things like the welcome back days, transition days. We just had a welcome school day with ninth graders. So when, when employees get added to some of those special days, some of those days are counted for their hours to make sure that they equal, um, the elementary, um, evening hours. Um, like I've said, this calendar hit every phase of our leadership teams across the district, each, each of the buildings. And it's exciting to see that our trimesters were, um, in, first time in history, we will have all of our, um, schools on one, uh, schedule. We'll all be tries next year. And so that's a good unification that we'll be doing. And it's, hasn't been easy to, um, have, um, semesters and trimesters in one calendar and then trying to fit everybody's needs in preparation for ending, um, grading periods and then also preparing for conferences. And now with, um, everybody being on the same, uh, uh, calendar, we're able to find a little more symmetry in our calendar than we had in the last couple of years. So that's very exciting. Um, so those are some calendar highlights. And then, um, just looking forward for, maybe from the lens of families. Uh, families will have two full weeks for winter. Um, spring break will, uh, be one full week. We've tried different, um, spring breaks and different weeks. We try rotate that. Um, this one is unique because we actually save, um, with, um, a holiday that our, our ca- uh, contracts still recognize is part of, uh, that March 3rd through April 3rd. So actually, um, instead of a full five days, uh, that one's, um, four days of spring break and then one day that's actually a contracted day. So that helped us with some, um, some calendaring and not having an extra day to plan around. Um, so that was a, a little nuance. Um, there are no early dismissals the whole school year and this will be the first year in, in, um, a couple of decades that I've ever, have been able to say that. Um, some districts like that, uh, you know, those for learning and I'm not saying that I wouldn't like it for learning, um, but they end up, um, I think, being a stressor in, on a district too. And so we're happy to be able to work, um, uh, through our professional development by how we, how we strengthened our length of day, which our length of day, we cut some time off and now we have consistent time built into, um, every week, uh, that we are working, uh, professional development, development into our, um, calendar days. That's not to say that I wouldn't like about 10 more days to work on professional development, but how we're doing it, um, I, I do believe it applies, it, um, offers a very consistent approach. Go ahead, last slide. Um, I will look ahead here quick to the 26-27 calendar, just in thought. While this calendar is being touted as one of the best calendars that our, um, families will have ever experienced here in Monticello, um, just for some of the nuances, which it really is, it's one of the most solid cal- family, family calendars I've ever seen. Next year will be a very, much of a challenge to reproduce this because Labor Day is on its, uh, last day, so it's on September 7th, um, which means that, um, uh, we would be starting school on the, um, latest possible day if we don't look at maybe some, doing some other types of things. So I'm looking at some other types of things right now, um, and exploring those and seeing which ones that we could implement maybe a little bit more quicker, uh, but, uh, doing some exploration right now. So that's the, a look ahead and then I'll open it up for questions to the school board.
I don't so much have a question as a comment and that is, it sounds like we are stretching the dollar as far as we can within the calendar. So I say, good job. Thank you.
I think families are going to really appreciate this calendar. Especially the way the breaks are broken up into, like that Monday of that Christmas week. I mean, that, that Monday of that Christmas week, you're, you're not going like two days. You know, you're, you know, a family can go for the needed travel or something. They could take off that, that weekend already and have a long weekend, so.
That brings up the point of, it actually has a potential of increasing student attendance too, which has been a goal of all of ours. So this is a calendar that, uh, should work well for that promotion of attendance.
Well, the staff, I think, equally, I think the staff will be so excited about it for their planning, their own family stuff, too, so.
And also for families, I see the consistency across the different grade levels as being a positive for families too. They'll like that a lot, I think.
Questions? This is an action item.
Make a motion to approve 2025-26.
Second, moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. And thank you for your hard work on it. Um, all right, now we're going to move on. We'll welcome up Director of Business Services, Ms. Tina Burkholder, to talk about board chair pay.
Good evening. Uh, last year, we looked at the board chair pay, um, just with Kathy in her role. She's very hands-on, does a lot of homework, does a lot of research. Um, but at the time, the board also wanted us, me to look at the board pay if it ever changes. So we looked at that and, you know, I'm sure Jamie's going to do an excellent job as board chair, but maybe not as much as Kathy. We don't want to force anybody to feel like they have to hit a certain standard. So we thought of a middle ground where the board chair does do extra work. They have extra meetings with the superintendent. They have more meetings. Um, so increasing the board pay only $120 per month above the current existing regular board member pay. So right now, um, regular board members receive $320.49 per month and then recommending to have the board chair pay be at $441.50 per month for that role.
Any questions for Tina? Saving more money, Mark.
Right.
All right, this is an action item.
I make a motion.
Second, moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, now we'll be moving on to second reading of policies by Human Resources Director, Mr. Rob Danicar.
All right, Chair Seaborn, members of the board. Um, we have eight, I believe I'm counting right, yes, eight, uh, policies to, uh, go through for second read tonight. Um, we'll start with, what order do we have? There we go. So 516. So, uh, 516 is, uh, the title of Student Medication and Telehealth. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the provisions that must be followed when administrate, administering non-emergency prescription medication to students at school. Uh, this one is coming forward because of, um, statutory, um, uh, changes that were made in the legislature, uh, last year. And I'll pause there for any questions. Hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to, um, 516.5, overdose medication. Uh, the purpose of this policy is a means of enhancing the health and safety of its students, staff, and visitors. The school district will acquire, administer, and store doses of an opioid, opie- hmm, opiate, uh, antagon- antagonist, excuse me, specifically naloxone or Narcan and administration devices or kits for emergency use to assist a student, staff member, or other individual believed or suspected to be experiencing an opioid overdose on school property during the school day or at school district activities. And again, we're bringing this one forward because of, um, some minor statutory changes. Any questions on 516.5? Okay. As part of our, uh, annual review process, uh, number 517, Student Recruiting, uh, comes forward. Um, the purpose of this policy is to prevent school district employees from exerting undue influence for purposes of securing or retaining the attendance of a student in a school. Largely, this is a policy which reads to support, uh, Minnesota State High School League approaches and bylaws. Um, it doesn't spell, uh, in some cases, it does spell out act- activities and athletics specifically. Um, generally, it is titled, "Student Recruiting." I'll pause there for any questions. Hearing none. Someday you guys will have a question. I'm just kidding. Uh, 518, uh, DNR, DNI orders. Um, I'm a little bit sad to see this one go. This is one of the oldest, uh, current policies in our, um, in our library. Um, hasn't been updated in some time, so excited to see it updated. The purpose of this policy is the school district recognized that it is serving students with complex health needs. The school district also recognized that school district staff may be confronted with requests to withhold emergency care of a student in the event of a life-threatening situation at school or school activities, or be presented with do not resuscitate, do not intubate orders. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidance to school district staff and parents or guardians in these situations. And I'll pause there for any questions. All right. Um, the next one, 522. So, uh, you might remember from, uh, earlier in February when we did first reading, um, there is new, uh, federal guidance regarding Title IX, Sex Discrimination Policy, Grievance, Procedure, and Process. Previously, uh, the previous presidential administration, uh, had set forth different guidance and we had adopted that in the fall of 2024. Um, that was repealed, uh, with the new administration coming in. So we are simply reverting back to the prior, the prior, uh, guidance from the year 2020. And so this is word for word what we had adopted previously. We're simply reinstituting it. And so along with this, you see in the, uh, actions for tonight is a deletion of the addendum to policy 522, which
to policy 522, which was adopted back in fall of '24. I'll pause there for any questions. Hearing none. We'll move on to 524, Internet Technology and Cell Phone Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. The purpose of this policy is to set forth policies and guidelines for access to the school district computer system and acceptable and safe use of the internet, including electronic communications. So the big change in this policy is that the MSBA has updated their model policy to reflect statutory changes. In this case, the Minnesota State Legislature adopted guidance that school districts must adopt cellphone, a cellphone policy. We had already had cellphone language in this policy. However, the language we had forbid or prohibited cellphones. The statute neither takes, does not take a position on pro or con cellphones. It simply says we must have a policy that addresses cellphones. And so by adopting this language, we are adopting the language which most closely reflects the legislative, the language in legislation. But then it also provides the opportunity for building by building for us to address cellphones within each of those school sites themselves. Any question on that one at all? Okay. 616, this is coming forward because of statutory change as well. This is School District System Accountability. The purpose of this policy is to focus public education strategies on a process that promotes higher academic achievement for all students and ensures broad-based community participation in decisions regarding implementation of the Minnesota K-12 academic standards in federal law. And we're lucky enough to, tonight, to have two Directors of Teaching and Learning here to hear about this one. And really, the only change in this one really comes down to the updated use of the term comprehensive achievement and civic readiness in place of world's best workforce. And I'm given to understand, we've already come up with an acronym for comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, and that's CACR. Rolls right off the tongue. Any questions on that one at all? All right. And finally, policy 806, again, coming forward because of change in statute, Crisis Management Policy. It's quite an extensive purpose. Paragraph on this one, I'll save everybody the, the time and effort. Really, what this boils down to is they deleted one, actually, three words, excuse me, from this policy. They deleted a reference to the Commissioner of, of Education, so two words deleted, sorry, Commissioner of Education, and just scrapped the of education part and referred to the Commissioner solitarily. So next time I see Terry Morrow, who crafts these for MSBL, ask him, tell me more about that, because I don't really understand it, neither did our policy committee, but that is recommendation of MSBA. So that's the only change in this one. Any questions on 806? Okay. And so this is an action item for tonight, Chair.
Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve policies sent forward by...
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mary Bartel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, just a reminder, you know, we joke that we don't have questions here, but the policy committee goes through these in great detail, and all of the board members have had access to these policies to review and look at for over three weeks. So they're, they're very familiar with these. Does anyone have anything else for tonight's agenda?
I actually laughed at that because I think you guys have lots of questions, and we have a robust discussion, so, but yeah, I agree with Jamie.
All right, if there is nothing else, we are adjourning our meeting at 7:05 PM. Our next school board meeting will be Monday, March 3rd, 2025, 5:00 PM.